With the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have some proclamations. We've changed this a little bit. I'm going to go down front and ask them to come up. Gary's going to read the wherés and the wherefor's.
So the first proclamation we have is Festival of Lights. So if I can have Brad Everett, Belinda Snyder, and if there are others, please come forward with Mayor Dodson.
Well, before we have Gary read the proclamation, just let me say, for those of you that haven't been down to Blue Earth Plaza to see what's been done, this is really quite an accomplishment by our business people and also other volunteers. It's unique. It's a wonderful addition to Manhattan, Kansas. It's going to draw people in, and we'll be doing this weekend after weekend until the holidays are through. We'll let the experts talk about that when we presented the proclamation, but this just shows you what involved citizens can do for our community. Gary?
Wherés. The Manhattan Festival of Lights is a unique celebration of the holiday season, and this year is a sixth annual event and takes place at the Blue Earth Plaza next to the Flint Hills Discovery Center with the opening ceremony to begin at 7:00 PM on Friday, November 23rd, 2018. Wherés, the Festival of Lights event is a collaboration of many businesses and local citizens with a love for their community and is funded through charitable donations and in-kind contributions. Wherés, the lighting of the tallest holiday tree in Kansas can be enjoyed for all to see, for it was Whoville and the generous donors who made it all come to be. This event will provide more cheer for your family that cannot be missed. Now therefore, Mike Dodson, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, proclaims November 23rd through January 1st, 2019 as Festival of Lights in the city of Manhattan and encourages all citizens and community members throughout the region and the state to enjoy the brilliant light displays and family fun activities.
So I would ask you to say a few words.
We are not only the tallest tree in Kansas, but we are now the tallest pixelated tree in the United States. So that's a great accomplishment, our volunteers, all of our donors.
I drove by the other day and saw you putting it together.
Isn't it neat? Yeah. But I'll let these guys talk about Friday night, 7:00, and we have the carnival the next week at 11:00, the ice sculpting, free barbecue, games, cookie decorating for the kids. So everybody, and we've got a GoFundMe this year to help pay for all the upgrades in our tree or on our website also. So, but Brad?
Joey.
Kayla, do you have anything to say?
Merry Christmas.
Santa Claus coming to you.
Thank you. We'll see you Friday night.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, the second proclamation is Small Business Saturday. So if I could have Alan Parker, Susan Doty, Tim and Melissa Vettel, and Scott Nading, and if there's others, please come forward as well.
Well, again, before we have Gary read, I think everybody in Manhattan understands how important our small businesses are to us. Every business is important. And when you look around a town that has evolved in the way Manhattan is, some of these small businesses have been the engine that has sustained the community over time. We have a lot of threats out there right now. We've had online retailing, which has caused some difficulties. We know one thing for sure. If we lose these small businesses, they will be held to pay for our downtowns, communities across Kansas and across the United States. So I'd ask, as all of us are doing our Christmas shopping and shopping throughout the year, to think about not only the shop owners, but all of the people or our citizens who are working in those businesses. It's very important we keep them healthy.
Wherés, the small locally owned businesses of Manhattan are vital to our city's economic health and contribute to our unique and vibrant community character. Wherés, the U.S. Small Business Administration states that small businesses create 65% of net new local jobs, and with every $100 spent at a small local retailer, $68 will return to the community through taxes, payroll, and donations to local schools and charities. Wherés, public awareness of the contributions made by Manhattan local businesses is the key to sustaining a healthy business climate. Now therefore, Mike Dodson, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, proclaims Saturday, November 24th, 2018, as Small Business Saturday in the city of Manhattan and urges all residents to join the rest of America and do a portion of their holiday shopping at small locally owned businesses.
Well, yes, I appreciate it, Mayor, proclaiming this small business and proclamation. And I do want to encourage everybody to get out and shop. We've been a small business in this town for 40 years now, and small business really is kind of the backbone of the business community in a town this size. And we've seen a lot of them come and go, and I'd like to see a lot more of them stay. And I challenge everybody in Manhattan to first shop local and shop small. So, thank you.
Before we do Commissioner comments, I'd like to call on Ron to give an update on some of the activities that have followed the flooding event, just to keep us all up to speed and let everybody know that we're continuing to think about it.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, has been quite a bit of activity related to that. We've identified there are 70 individuals that are living at National Church Residence at Garden Grove that are still displaced. A lot of them are staying with family, and there are a few that are in hotels in Manhattan and Junction City. The city has made initiatives to purchase three properties, 100 Dix Drive, 939 Village Drive, and 921 Village Drive previously. In our voluntary buyout program, there are applications in the works for three additional properties, one on Bethany, one on Village, and one on Fairman. And then there's intention to apply for four more, two more on Village, another on Bethany, and some Gardenway Townhomes. So that buyout program, this will be dependent on the state and federal government providing the necessary funds to do that, but we've been encouraged by some of that, and there's some additional incentive. A lot of these properties did have flood insurance, and so a lot of the flood insurance proceeds can go towards the buyout. So there's some extra incentives in that regard. There's been a long-term recovery committee established through the Manhattan Foundation for the funds that have been donated. Specifically, Catholic charities applied for a grant to hire a caseworker, and Deb Abner is that new person, and she's been hired for a nine-month assignment. She will be engaging flood victims after beginning following the Thanksgiving vacation. Her goal is to distribute funds that have been raised by the Manhattan Community Foundation and develop a system to guide future recovery efforts. She also plans to have a Second Mark event with area agents at a future date to be determined, just to kind of see where additional needs might be. Also, the committee is hoping to conduct a furniture drive, again, at a date to be determined as folks move to facilities or back into facilities that have been repaired and have a need to replace items that were lost. Ms. Abner has experience working with Salvation Army at the state level and has been through many disaster recovery situations, so I think that's a good plus for the community. Also, the Manhattan Flood Recovery Fund has raised $38,937 in private donation, and that's been matched by funds at the foundation to include a total of $77,874. $15,000 of that has been distributed, $10,000 to Shepherd Crossing, $5,000 to United Way. Also, Catholic charities and the Salvation Army have each distributed nearly $13,000 of their own funds to victims. And the Knights of Columbus gave away $23,000 in Dylan's gift cards at the Mark event. So on the city side of things, we are hosting folks from FEMA and the Kansas Department of Emergency Management out at the Headquarters Fire Station that is working on processing our claims, as well as other claims in the region, I assume, for reimbursements for some of the emergency protective measures and other aspects of the damage and flooding that occurred. We are also been notified by the Natural Resource Conservation Service that three projects were eligible for funding. That includes damage along the Linear Park. On Wildcat Creek, there's a big debris field where Wildcat Creek takes a big left-hand turn to go to the Cal River, so it'll cover removing that debris and doing embankment repair at that location. And then there was a couple of sanitary sewer line work that they've agreed to cover as well. Might also report that at the city-county meeting this past week, the city and county commissioners voiced support for moving forward with establishing the Wildcat Creek Working Group that would involve a citizens committee as well as a technical committee. Also, as part of that, to proceed with RF, Request for Proposals for the Development of Some Flood Modeling, and also to continue to work towards voluntary buyout. So we anticipate that Request for Proposals being brought to the respective governing bodies hopefully in December, so we could start getting that process moved, and both entities starting to establish appointments to that committee. Thank you.
Any questions for Ron?
Just that, I would like to be notified each time the committee meets, whether technical or working. So have you, would you be able to set up something on the city's notification system so we can sign up to get notices of those meetings?
Sure, once that, obviously, we'll bring those committee appointments to you initially. Once the committee's getting set up and running, then we'll be happy to post all of that information and the notification process for folks that can self-sign up.
Will there be an opportunity for a county commissioner or a city commissioner to serve on the work groups?
That's obviously something y'all can discuss. That wasn't something we had in the information we provided at the city-county meeting, but if that's something you desire, that's a possibility.
I don't know. I just wanted to raise it and see if there's any interest. So maybe the next, when you come back to us with the names of the two groups, that'd be something we could talk about.
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner comments. Melinda, you have any?
Just that, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce. They had a wonderful reception for the outgoing mayor earlier this evening, and it was delightful. And I think that's all. Thanks.
I just wanted to give an update to the community. I've been given regular updates to the other city commissioners, but I said on the MPO Board, the Transportation Board essentially, so we talk a lot about ATA and how it's, how the ridership numbers are. As many of you know, in August, we launched our new fixed routes, so we expected ridership to increase, but with the new fixed routes, ridership almost doubled in one month. That same month, in August, we also offered free ridership, so we were really eager to see if those numbers held in September, if maybe the free rides bumped it up, but we saw another increase in September. And then we just got back our October numbers, and we saw another 2,000 increase. So in July, before we launched the fixed routes, we had about 3,500 people consistently riding a month. This last month, we had 11,000, more than 11,000 people riding on an ATA bus at some point in the city of Manhattan. So I think those numbers really illustrate that the investment that the city commission made in helping those fixed routes get established was a huge improvement for our community. There are people riding those routes. It helps ensure that everybody in Manhattan has access to affordable transportation and anything that we can do to help mitigate cars on the road. There's only money down the line that we save in infrastructure. So I just wanted to share with the community as a whole that we're seeing really good numbers there, and it's something that we should all be proud of.
Okay, I just want to mention, we had the proclamation for Festival of Lights, but of course, we also have Friday, December 7th, the week after the big tree gets lit, is the Mayor's Lighted Holiday Christmas Parade, which of course benefits the Flint Hills Red Basket. And there's still time to register, to be in the parade if, you know, you want to put a float together. But I wanted to highlight that there's two events in there. We have what's called a foot float in the parade, so you can decorate yourself and walk, or you can have a group, and we've had groups that have walked each year. And you can also decorate a bike, because there's a bike float, and there's an award, I think, given for each of those when you do that. So if you haven't signed up for it yet, please consider participating. There's still time to be part of the parade.
So this is Thanksgiving week. There's always a community Thanksgiving dinner at Old Chicago, so that's open to anyone and everyone in the community. If your family lives far away and you want to meet up with a lot of people, that's the perfect place to go. I've been there before. It's great. Also, if you are traveling for Thanksgiving, please travel safely and enjoy your family time. Thank you.
I think as everybody knows, some of us sit on the county, Rida County Law Board, and we were successful in making an offer to Dennis Butler, who is the current police chief in Ottawa, Kansas. And one of the things that we're hearing is how engaged he is with that community, and he has made that promise to all of us, not only here in the city of Manhattan, but to all of the small communities across the county. And that's a very positive thing, because one of the things we were seeking is someone who would have an outreach to all of our citizens, so that all of them felt included and had a voice in how the RCPD was administered. So we're glad to have that solved, and we'll say goodbye to Brad sometime at the end of December, and then we'll bring Dennis onboard formally into the position. Also want to thank Wynne Butler. He is the guy who decorates the fire engine. We had a little bit of a snafu. We lost the brakes on the fire engine, had to get that repaired, so he was down there late trying to get the fire engine decorated. I wanted to thank the RCPD and the Fire Department for all the work they did. They were there before the parade started, and it was colder than the devil, and they were there after we finished. So thanks to all of you that helped make that parade successful. As Wynne said, at the festival, or the parade on the 7th, and Gina from downtown Manhattan and I will be on the radio tomorrow morning to say some more about that. I just echo Wynne's comments. And then this Friday, as you've seen on the screen, and it was announced in the proclamation, we're going to have the festival down at Blue Earth Plaza. There's some things going on before kind of the official kickoff at 7, so I'd encourage everyone to come down. We've got a great parking garage, so there's lots of places to park. And so that's a wonderful area down there that people work very hard on, so we ought to go down and take a look and be part of that. Any further comments? Okay. Well, first thing we'll do is do the consent agenda, and the items on the consent agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature, or those items which has previously been reviewed by the city commission. A commissioner may, of course, request that an item be moved to the end of the consent agenda for further discussion. Does the commission have any questions on any of the consent agenda items or wish to comment?
I just want to highlight, you know, Item H. People have talked for years about having electric vehicle plug-in stations in town, and I guess West Star is going to put two in down by Discovery Center. They're going to operate it, and they'll be pay-for stations, so the city's not picking up the tab on the electric. But that's a, you know, that's a step forward, so I guess the only problem will be if people without electric cars park in the two parking places, but other than that, we should be good.
And we talked about that a little bit this afternoon, and we've got a few private enterprises around the city that are doing that, so this is a great addition, particularly for those who want to come to our city and seeing that as something that we've done, I think is very positive.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Let me ask for a public comment first.
I get so excited sometimes.
I do the same thing. That's why they wrote the script for me. Well, I'd ask now for a public comment on any item on the consent agenda. So if you have a comment, please come forward and let us hear from you. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Call the roll, guys.
Mayor Dodson?
Yes?
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
And Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Now we'll move to the general agenda, and the first item is to consider approving a resolution number 112018C requesting that the Board of Riley County Commissioners make certain findings regarding the island annexation of the Lot 1 St. Luke's addition. So the presenter will be Chad Bunger from Community Development.
Thank you, Mayor. As I said, my name's Chad Bunger, Assistant Director with Community Development, and provide really brief comments. The St. Luke's Lutheran Church has proposed this area, more specifically this platted lot that is currently out in Riley County, to be annexed into the city and rezoned to a single-family zoning district. As you can see here, it is not adjacent to the city limits, thus is considered an island annexation. State statute requires when this situation occurs that the process is first, the committee forwards a resolution explaining the request and the asking for the county to acknowledge the annexation and generally approve of it. And so that's what this is for tonight. Once, if, once that resolution's forwarded to them and the county agrees to it, then we'll come back for first and second reading with you for the annex, formal annexation and rezoning request. As you can see here, it's just adjacent to the edge of the Manhattan urban area boundary. It is shown in our growth area. As I mentioned, it's currently AG in the Riley County, and it's proposed to be R1. Our understanding, we have not seen any site plans, any formal building permits, whatnot, or any of the other plats, is that it is for St. Luke's new church, which is a permitted use in the R1 district. Regardless, if they don't build a church there, at most generally would be a single, one single-family house here. So it has very limited development potential as it sits. I don't think I have very much more. In fact, I have no more. So really, just, city administration is recommending that the commission approve the resolution to forward on to Riley County for their considerations and annexation request. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I just have one quick question, and it probably doesn't apply to this particular situation, but I know when we do other types of annexations, there's certain, within our own laws, there are certain obligations we have, like emergency response time. Does that apply to these island annexations?
It'll certainly be considered. It, the, of the 13, well, the annexation request is basically, does it meet our growth principles within the comprehensive plan? And it is within the comprehensive plan, boundaries, and it's not abnormal to leapfrog like it is, but it is something we've done in the past. And then with the rezoning, then there are 13 standards of, you know, that are going to impact adjacent properties, public health, safety, welfare. So those things are considered. It is, the Manhattan urban area boundary is partially defined by our ability to serve that site, and it is well within that. So we'd be able to serve it with sewer water as well as our emergency services.
Okay. That's all I have.
That was a long-winded answer. I'm sorry.
So Chad, I was looking at the Manhattan Urban Planning Board's comments, and this was one of the ones that I was thinking of as well. There's a flooding area in that place. I know it's an island annexation, but that's also an area where flooding is a huge concern.
Yeah.
And I wanted to know what your feedback is, because there wasn't that much, I know there probably was a lot more discussion than what was in the minutes, so, and I don't mind if you go a little long. I want a thorough answer.
You bet.
For, because we don't want to make a mistake.
So it is a very large lot. To my knowledge and practical development patterns would be, they would develop closer to the Anderson Avenue. The floodplain generally is in the back half or three-quarters. And there are, there's probably some floodway on here which is prohibited, generally prohibited for development. Our floodplain regulations are such that one could build in that floodplain, although they would have to elevate. In this area, it's probably two or three feet higher than the minimum FEMA standard. In addition to that elevation to protect that property, we have standards in place. So essentially, every shovel full of fill that they would bring in, which is typically the way you would elevate a prop building, you have to take 1.2 times the amount of dirt out of the flood, or the floodplain in the general area to compensate for that storage that is lost, and actually improve the amount of storage for the flooding. So we have, I think, the best set of regulations in the state of Kansas in terms of flood protection for new developments, as well as protecting adjacent properties. With that said, we haven't officially seen a site plan or a building permit, so it's tough for me to say that, you know, how that all play out, but we do have those regulations that are designed to protect the building, as well as make sure it doesn't worsen adjacent properties. In terms of stormwater management for runoff and those sort of things, we also have our detention requirements through Public Works. That is, anything over a half acre, they have to evaluate if detention is appropriate or not. We've done that all along the creek, and so that will also be evaluated at time of future building permits.
You might just, for clarification, walk through kind of the development process?
Sure.
That is, we annex, we zone, we then entertain a development plan, and so on. Which step applies to Mr. Reddy's question, which is, when do we entertain whether or not something could be built there that is in, perhaps in conflict with a floodplain that we've established?
Great question. So I'll draw this all the way out. So the resolution gets passed tonight. We'll go in short order to the county where they'll consider that your request. Assuming they approve it, the first and second reading for annexation and the rezoning will come back before you for approval. Once that's done, again, we haven't really been given a full detail of their development plans, but let's just assume that they will be building just one church, nothing else on the site. That church- That church development plan would go straight to the building permit review process with Code Service Office. Code Service Office will facilitate that, where they will distribute the, the building permit and the site plans to the fire department, obviously, Community Development for reviewing of the zoning requirements for the building, location, is parking and landscaping and those sort of things, as well as to Public Works for access, and then the, the floodplain, or excuse me, stormwater, Community Development will also consider the floodplain regulations. There is a, a good chunk of that property that is outside of any floodplain, and like I said, it's, most of it is towards the highway, and so if it's outside of the floodplain, there's really no floodplain regulations to review, it would just be about the, the zoning requirements for the location of the building to park it, parking those sort of things, coded compliance, and then any stormwater management requirements for, from Public Works. And then, as soon as they satisfy all the rules and regulations, that building permits issued and away they go constructing it. That's in a real nutshell, obviously.
Could we just annex the part that is on the outside of the floodplain area?
It's certainly something you could do, we would have to...
Or have the county consider that? My, my fear is that once we, you know, once the county and we approve some type of annexation, those types of details might get lost in the bigger conversation as it moves forward. So I'm trying to be a little bit more cautious before we approve something when we have options of outside the floodplain as well as within the floodplain area.
Sure. I will, it is certainly something you are free to do, it would, we'd have to step back and get a new legal description and those sort of things and, and work through that. I will say this, and this is not a knock on Riley County at all, but they do not have a set of regulations in place today, and I know they are working on it for the future, but today, if that remained in the county, they have a lower bar for development than the city of Manhattan does. So I, I appreciate and understand your concern, but in terms of regulations and the application of those regulations, we have a much higher bar to, to overcome than what Riley County would. So if we're concerned about developing in a floodplain or causing issues up and downstream within the floodplain, having it within the city of Manhattan, in my opinion, is something that can, we can better manage that floodplain topic.
Chad?
The other thing you may want to talk about is the, the church owns all of those acres.
Sure.
So dividing it in some way would be somewhat problematic for them.
Yeah, it certainly, I will let them answer it, it would be unique for us, it's probably not unprecedented, but it would be unique, and, but I'll let them express any concerns they may have of that.
Chad, I, I realize that at the annexation stage is not necess, where, you know, we would get into the detention ponds or flood, but I think that we are really going to be trying to be sensitive.
Sure.
To the development that we allow along Wildcat Creek, having just had 300-plus people displaced and, on Labor Day. So I think we will be watching and being very careful in the future, and I would not want us to compromise any of our standards as we go into this, so.
Sure.
Okay, thanks. We'll be watching for the next step.
Very good.
Yeah, what about adjacent landowners? Did they get any input on this request?
The, the rezoning process, the public notice process to, through the planning board, excuse me, did notify all properties because it's outside of the city boundaries within 1,000 feet, so we did notify.
Did anybody object?
No, we didn't have any letters, to my knowledge, and no one showed to the planning board.
Cause I, I did get one, that's why I asked.
Okay.
I had a person that said they owned agricultural property next to it.
Uh huh.
And they did not like the idea, cause they were fearful that the city might annex their property to.
Sure.
In the future, and they didn't want that, cause they didn't want to pay our tax rate.
Understand that.
So I, I wanted to throw that, you know, throw that out, I don't know if that person's here to speak tonight or not.
I just have one more question off of something that you mentioned, to make sure that I understand the terminology right. So you said if they built the entire property inside the part of the land that isn't within the flood zone, then they wouldn't be subject to floodplain regulations?
Correct.
They'd still be subject to the storm management?
Yes.
Right? So the storm management process would be the one that addressed the runoff that the building created, or whatever parking lots or concrete they built, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
It's one thought, but I wanted to be sure.
And so that, to, to clarify on that, and Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, our standard is anything over a half acre, the developer or, and their consultants would have to evaluate if the post-development runoff, the rate of runoff, is higher than the pre-development, then generally we would require detention of some sort. There, there very well be and most likely will be more water that leaves that site, but at what rate is what we're concerned in, so it doesn't just come shooting off that it's detained, it's metered out, and managed appropriately, so.
I, I just wanted to make sure that if they built it all with inside the area that wasn't a floodplain, they were still subject to the same kind of regulations?
Most certainly.
Which I assume they were, but I wanted to be sure.
You bet.
I wanted to ask one other question, are there any, what advantages does a city gain by annexing those?
Well, being that it's a church, obviously not a whole lot of tax implications, I believe. Sewer and water connections will be a revenue source through our enterprise funds. And then, as I mentioned, in my opinion, with stormwater management or floodplain regulations management, we have a higher bar for, for development to occur within, within the city. So we would be able to control that development a little better than out in the county with the county's current regulations. So, yeah, it's probably not a great boon for our tax revenues in terms of ad valorem tax, but there may be other revenues with that.
And then this, this email I got, the fear that we'd annex more, does, you know, if we start cooking up lots of sewer and water, does that start causing people to want to, you know, R1 district, build houses out there? And that equates, is, is in the noise area from Fort Riley?
It is within the, the Joint Land Use Studies noise boundary or, or area of, oh, impact's not the right word, it's not the word I want to use, but it is in there. The J-LOSE, the Joint Land Use Study, does recognize this as a growth area for Manhattan, and so generally allows for use as long as the property owners understand that there are impacts from the fort in terms of noise and vibration, so generally a housing development would be acceptable there. I don't know if it's, if that's the plan or if it's coming, but there are allowances for it. And the addition to that is, it's one platted lot now, and so if it were to be anything more than a church or other permitted uses, or one single-family house, it would come back, have to come back through the plating process before you to consider also.
We asked Herb Abel, I think, out at Environmental at Fort Riley to comment, his, his comments were in the, in the packet, and it's just kind of restatement of what the agreement was on, under J-LOSE, so at least they, they've been helpful in responding.
Yeah, good, very good partners.
Commissioner, relative to your comment of the concern about the city annexing adjacent property, it's been our history that we only annex property that we were asked to annex. So the property owner, we haven't forcibly taken property against someone's wishes, and as long as this was still an island, the county would have a, a say in that regard too. And so, you know, unless that gentleman sold his property for development, I mean, that would be a consideration, but I, I don't, I don't see a scenario in this valley that we would be actively pursuing annexations, unless they were requesting it, and then it'd be part of the evaluation process.
Let's ask for public comment. Thanks, Chad. Mark Hetzel, did you want to say a few words for someone from your group?
Mark Hetzel, 1206 Stacy Lane, St. Luke's Council President. Yes, the, the one thing for economic development-wise, it'll be a $3.2 million building for our, our Phase One, which is a lot of the dirt moving and, and our initial fellowship hall and, and some church offices and an early learning center slash daycare preschool, so that's the only financial advantage to the city, is generating some, some jobs and some income for a period of time there to start with. The good thing is, is that they did put, run that sewer line from right here, out here, and then up to there, so, and then the water line, you'll be hearing a request for the water line thing to come along here to go up there also, and so that may speed up some of the development once those other utilities, or now that the sewer's in and the water may be in. I know the Blueville Nursery has got another location picked out to maybe move to at some point, so I don't know what kind of timeframe they're looking at there, but I'll let Matthew, he's the brains of the operation.
Yeah, I'm Matthew Coles with BG Consultants, and I can speak a little bit to the floodplain and some of the plans for the, for the building. The existing sewer line, as Mark said, runs right through here, and the building and parking will all be north of that existing sewer line, in the northern half of the, I believe it's around 28 acres. The floodplain is all within the southern, you know, well south of that. I think the finished floor of the proposed building is roughly 10 feet higher than the floodplain elevation, so we're quite a ways out of the floodplain with, with what we have planned.
Did you start to say something about the water line too, or?
Uh, sure. So we are requesting that the water line be extended from just west of Blueville along the south side of Anderson Avenue, and it'll go all the way to the west side of, of St. Luke's Lot, and then I think, for now, it'll end there, but I think in the future, the city plans on extending it also up north. And the city is requesting that it be upsized to a 12-inch water line for their needs in the future as well.
Let me ask Rob to see how my memory is on this, but is this the line that was going to connect the south to the north that we were going to build over time?
Correct. It'll, the water line will create a loop that'll help feed this area. The sanitary sewer line helps us take off load, so what Matthew's talking about, helps take off load off the little kitten system and eliminate a lift station that we hate for maintenance. So it, big picture stuff, that's what these two components will do, and that's why we're asking, and their request, they'll pay for an eight-inch, what an eight-inch line normally costs, the city pays for the upsizing between, the price difference between eight-inch and 12-inch, and that'll be on the waterfront.
Yeah, good. Any, any questions for the church while they're there?
I would just add, yeah, we have, we, we know that the bottoms, I think, seven acres or so is considered either the 100 or 500 year, and we've talked about maybe putting a soccer field or a baseball field or something down there that would not, that could flood and not mess anything up too much, and so we have absolutely no plans for anything south of the sewer line, because it'd have, sewer would have to be pumped up to the sewer line, and so we don't have any interest in anything south of where you guys put the sewer line in, and so.
All right, well, thanks very much, I appreciate it. Any other, any other persons would like to make a comment? Okay, hearing none, I will close the public comment and ask commissioners if any further comments they'd like to make or questions.
I'm not concerned about the island annexation. I think that at the perimeter of our community, that's where our future growth is. It may be a church this time, but it may be commercial, maybe, I think, someone suggested that industrial was originally what was anticipated out there. But I do know that I'm really interested in following the flood, anything that adds to the flood impact there. But, so the island annexation, I appreciate being, you know, someone coming to the city wanting to do that. I, I think that's the best way for us to grow and proceed, is with our community, so it's a good thing.
Okay, entertain a motion?
I wanted to say one more thing. I'm a little bit concerned about, you know, the island annexation, because I really don't want to see a lot of R1 houses go up there because of the noise area and the flood and all that, long-term, and I hope it doesn't push that. But, but it sounds like there is an advantage to the sewer and water that, that, you know, wasn't mentioned, besides the cost of building the building, that, that does make sense to me, that, 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 that happens, but, but I think that would be a mistake to see the city put housing areas out in that direction because of that noise area and the way it is and, and the way Anderson Avenue is. I mean, and we expanded it out to Blueville and left it that, and I think it was a while back, we, we put in the sewer line to help someone that was having a, a problem, and at that point, we discussed that we didn't want that to be the impetus for that, all that agricultural land to be changed to R1. Next thing we know, we got a housing area there, and then people are complaining about Fort Riley, and so I'm, I'm not in fan, a fan of that, but I don't have a problem with the church, because that seems to, you know, make sense, that's not going to cause anybody to permanently live there, and maybe it'll have a daycare center, which we can always use too, I think that was mentioned, we got a shortage of that in town, so. So I think all in all, that makes sense, especially with the guarantee of the people that have the other agricultural land, they don't want to get swept up into the city against their wishes, and I, and I wouldn't support that if that happened, so.
Make a comment and then a motion. I, I was kind of reluctant at first, but I think if the city has a little bit more control over that area as far as flooding, that makes me a little bit more engaged in that effort once it's annexed, so I'm glad we're doing that part of it. With that, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve resolution number 112018-7 requesting that the Board of Riley County Commissioners make certain findings regarding the island annexation of Lot One St. Luke's addition.
Second.
Gary Kowal, roll.
Commissioner Reddy.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner McKee.
Yes.
Commissioner Morse.
Yes.
Mayor Dodson.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, the next item is item B, Consider West Star Energy Incorporated Direct Renewable Participation Service Agreement. And the presenter will be Jason Hilger's Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, we have a opportunity this evening to enter into an agreement with West Star for some renewable energy. They signed a 20-year purchase agreement with a wind farm in northeast Kansas and have been approaching large customers of theirs to purchase some of this energy over the next 20 years. You may have read about it in the paper, there've been several other entities taking advantage of this. It locks in that rate for 20-year period at that 1.8 cents per kilowatt hour. We spend about 2.6 to 2.7 million a year with West Star for our energy use. They gave us scenarios, and we provided those in the packet of going 100%, 50%, 25%. We landed on 50% internally for discussion purposes in order to bring this to you all, which would, expected to save the city between 45 and 50 grand a year. That's based on the last five years' experience, and if you paid attention to that chart, each year would have really fluctuated quite a bit with our usage, but on average, we were looking at 45 to 50K in savings. We're looking for authority this evening to finalize this agreement and have the mayor and city clerk execute. Mike Soliday and Brad Kessel are both here from West Star this evening, if you have specific questions for them, but as I mentioned, they've been out, the, the company has been out and about throughout Kansas, looking at large customers to take advantage of this. We'll clearly be using other sources of energy from West Star, and we'll look at the fluctuations in rates as we move forward. We've clearly been paying more on an annual basis for that rate over the last several years, and it's anticipated that it would continue to go up. This obviously would lock us in for a certain usage of energy and hopefully result in some savings over time. So be happy to answer any questions, and again, West Star reps are here as well.
I just had one, as I was looking at the charts there, and, and of course, it said you could do this for 100%, but the staff decided 50. I'm just curious, what's the logic? Because, because, you know, when somebody just looks at that in the paper, it looks like, well, gee, if you can save 50,000 for getting it at 50%, why don't you just take 100 and save 100,000?
Yeah.
What's the downside?
There was some discussion internally about that. It, it, it's a hedge. It's like playing a little bit of the future game, you know, where will energy be in five years or 10 years or 15 or 20? It's a long time to lock something in, and we felt comfortable with half of our usage today. If energy sources, I mean, it's just, it's tough to predict. It's tough to predict if we're just going to see energy costs increase over the next 20 years. They may flatten out. Deregulation or overregulation is going to influence that at the federal level. There's a lot of federal influences, obviously, you know, national influences over our, our energy uses. It's a scenario. It doesn't mean we can't go 100%. But 50, you just felt like, you know, something we could capitalize on, take a look at. There might be future options for additional wind energy options or solar that we could take advantage of, that might actually even be at a lower rate in five or 10 years. This gives us some flexibility to do that in the future as well.
Okay, good. That, that answers the question, because that's the one that I've heard from a number of people, and they're trying to figure out, you know, what the, what the logic is. So I've got it. Thanks.
Yeah.
The, the rate is $1.83, is that, is that right?
Per kilowatt area, 1.8 cents. It's not a $1.83, it's 1.8 cents.
1.83, right. I think I saw, and Linda Cook from KSU talked about this a little bit at Chamber of Commerce, but I think they've locked in at 50% as well. She said something about 250,000 a year. I wonder if she.
That's because they have more energy.
Yeah. So if we're paying 2.6 million.
6, 2.7 million.
That means their energy bill is pretty doggone high, doesn't it?
Yep. It would.
Oh, man, yeah. It's enough to make your eyes water there, well, that money.
Sounds like about five times what we pay.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. And this wind energy is, maybe we can ask the Westar folks, but this wind energy is coming out of an established for, farm kind of up in our northeast quadrant? Is that?
It is, and I know they're welcome to join me at any time. They, they identified that Soldier Creek Wind Farm in northeast Kansas in their literature.
Yeah, I couldn't remember the extent of that and whether it was all built out already or?
First of all, my name is Mike Soliday, Customer Solutions Manager for Westar Energy. The wind farm has not been built yet. We go to, we don't go construction. Next tariff goes to construction, hopefully first of the year, and the plan is to have that built and completed by December 2020, which this agreement would start place probably January 2021.
And that, that, what did, what did you say? It's a 300-megawatt field, is that right?
Yes. The total is a 300-megawatt wind farm. 200 megawatts is for our retail customers, which City of Manhattan is, and then the other 100 megawatts is going to some other customers we have out there.
Yeah, I have a question for you. Yeah, I understand green fuel and green bill. Why green tariff? It just has this negative connotation when you say green tariff fuel or green tariff bill. Is there a reason? I mean, is there an implication for why that word is there? Otherwise?
And the actual term for the agreement is Direct Renewable Participation Service and not green tariff. We termed it green tariff early on in our conversations, but the actual agreement is Direct Renewable Participation Service for our customers.
Okay. Because in the, in the chart that has all the numbers on it, keeps saying green tariff, and I can't get past tariff, because it seems just like a contradiction in terms, and we're saving. So I was just wondering if, if that word can be removed. But I, I think this is a good position for, for Manhattan, being that Kansas State University is already on board, and it seems to be the way we want to go. Hopefully, we'll, we'll reap more rewards towards being more energy efficient and saving at some level. Thank you. When do you plan to take on residential customers? Not.
We don't have anything at this time.
I bet not.
It's just for customers who have a demand of 500 KW or greater who can qualify for this program.
I understand. I just had to ask, thanks.
Um, I've, Jason, back to your comments on how we landed at the 50%. I, so I guess just to fully understand the agreement, if we say 100% tonight, then we're locked into that for 20 years, regardless if we find a cheaper energy solution elsewhere, correct?
Correct.
Um, do you know something that I don't know that's going to happen in two or three years? It's just going to like drastically reduce the cost of something like solar or wind?
No, I, I think it's just, it's both sides of the argument. You could come at it from energy costs will never be any cheaper, lock it in forever. 10 years from now, we just don't know where the technology's going to be, or even what the, you know, 1.8 cents per kilowatt hour on wind. What if it's 0.9 in 10 years? And we can take the rest of the usage and lock into a rate at that time. You could play it both ways. You can say, why not do it all, or why not do less now? The opportunity in the future might actually net you bigger gains. So if we split it in the middle, take advantage of it today, which, again, we've seen different entities do different things, reference to K-State going at a half. We've seen other entities go higher with their percentage. It gives us a little bit of flexibility in the future if they decide to, you know, construct and build a new one, and efficiencies are gained, and there's even a greater discount, and we can take advantage of it then.
I guess the only reason I struggle is partly because I'm not, this discussion, I'm not fully driven by money on it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We're saving money at 100%, but I'm also concerned about us waiting another five years and still getting 50% of our energy from a source that isn't as clean. So that's something that's weighing on me as well. So at first, I love this plan. Like, when I read this, I was like, why do we not have things like this all the time? Like, this is beautiful. But I would like to see us to get at a higher rate sooner rather than later. So I guess if we approve this tonight, is there opportunities if we don't see any of these efficiencies increase, and then, and it seems like the rate's staying steady to reapproach in a year or two and asks to be upped?
I think Mike commented, but I think they're about to run out of this offer. There have been that many folks interested in it.
So as a company, or, I mean, is, and this is an area that you're expanding rapidly, that there's going to be further opportunity in the future?
Correct. So 200 megawatts is for our retail customers. We are subscribed up to 190 megawatts already, so there's very little left today. There's a few players involved right now. We're waiting last minute to get signatures. Once signature's done, they're in. If we continue to have a lot of interest and more retail customers are interested in this, we'll go do another project.
So do you think since you're at 190 now, that illustrates that there's pretty good interest, and you're probably going to go out and do another project?
If we have enough interest, we'll do another project.
I'm just particularly interested in this, whatever the City of Manhattan can do to reduce their carbon footprint, and we want to do. And so I don't want to miss an opportunity because we think maybe in two or three years, there might be a little bit of a lower rate. So that's the only reason I'm asking.
So I just, so other consideration that we would have would be, and not going in more, and, and it probably isn't two or three down the road, but it might be seven or 10 down the road, is as our wastewater treatment plant process continues to grow, and we make decisions there to go maybe anaerobic or some other treatment process, we may be an energy producer. We may, the, the treatment methodology may produce our own energy, and so, which may be much cheaper for, so I just, versus tying ourselves up completely for maybe short-term gain, keeping our, our options flexible and, you know, grants for more energy-efficient fixtures or facilities are all part of that mix. But what I'm hearing Mike say is that it might be not wise to go 100%, just because if they do get more opportunity for more growth in, in other green energy, we might have another opportunity to add to it as well, so.
Okay. Well, I'm supportive of this first step, and I'm excited about it. Just know that you have planted a seed, and I'm going to be annoying about this now for the next year or two, so just know.
Any more questions for Mike? Okay, thanks very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any, any public comment? All right, we'll close public comment and ask, are there any further comments or discussion?
Mayor, I move that we approve the use of renewable energy and authorize city administration to finalize, and the mayor and the city clerk to execute an agreement with Westar Energy for 50% of the city's total energy use.
I'll second.
Gary?
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Any further discussion? Okay, if not, we stand adjourned. Thank you.